All right, good evening. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. Before we get started, I'll ask everybody to stand and we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, this thing is really low. Sir, I want to turn, and I'm going to keep a little distance here for you all, but sorry over there on the camera. Tonight, I think this is, in the six years that I've been mayor, the most important proclamation I've ever made. I'm so thankful for all of you for coming here. First, I'll read it and I just want to say a couple of words to all of you. Whereas Operation Hope, which is heroin opiate prevention effort, provides an invaluable service to the Waterville community and surrounding areas. And whereas Operation Hope focuses on enforcement, education, and treatment with treatment being the primary focus of operation. And whereas the Waterville Police Department will attempt to place each individual asking for help into a residential treatment facility. And whereas, when an individual is found to be eligible, the individual will be set up with a volunteer angel to help with the placement process. And whereas, the volunteer angels are the backbone of this program, helping the police department to assist the individual suffering from substance abuse disorder with placement and/or outside referrals. And whereas Operation Hope has assisted 220 people since its inception. In January 2017, and many of those people have gone on to become productive members of their communities. And whereas, the coordinators of Operation Hope are Officer Robert Booley, Detective Chase Fabian, Officer Ryan Dinsmore, and SRO Linda Smedberg. And the program is administered by Deputy Chief William Bonney. Now therefore, I, Nick Isgro, Mayor of Waterville, on behalf of the city council, do hereby present keys to the city. To Chief Massey and Deputy Chief Bill Bonney, representing all of the staff and volunteers who helped make Operation Hope a success. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. So, I've never given away keys to the city, and this will be the one and only time that I actually do so. You know, we live in a time where rural Americans have just been ravaged by this opiate epidemic. Big pharmaceutical companies have gotten away with murder. Doctors have not been held liable for their part in this, and I don't know anyone who doesn't know somebody whose life has been affected by this, not one person, including myself. We've all had friends and family who have been touched by this devastating, devastating epidemic. And nothing seemed to be being done about it. You look on the federal level, you look in the medical industry, there is no political will to deal with this in a way that treats people as human beings. There's no, there's no mass protests, there's no state funerals for these victims, yet we all know them. We all know them. And I am so incredibly honored and grateful to be the mayor of the city during a time when you folks have stepped up to fill this void, and I hope that every community in the state looks at what you are doing. And then I hope that this state can rise up to be an example to the rest of the country, because rural America needs it. So, thank you all. I love each and every one of you so much for all that you do, and you are just affecting lives, you know it. I don't need to tell you, but somebody should, because we can't, you must be recognized for this. And so, while I'm giving these keys away to these gentlemen here, these keys are really for all of you. So, thank you so much for all that you do. Thank you so much.
On behalf of all of our angels and officers who really are responsible for the day-to-day operations and what has made this program so incredibly successful, had it not been for these folks and Officer Booley and some of the other officers who help oversee the program. So, I'd just like to turn it over to Bill, because he deserves a lot of recognition for implementing this program and has complete oversight over the program, and I'd like him to say a few words before we close.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mayor, and the council. As everybody here knows, without the support of Mr. Roy and the council, this doesn't happen. And so, when this program started, the mission really was to save lives. And we had a vision on that mission, but that vision would have never been fulfilled without you guys, without the volunteers of this program, without the coordinators that toil every day to make sure that somebody that's having the worst day of their life gets help and comes through it on the other side. So, I just want to say, I'm very proud of all of you, I'm very proud of this program, and thank you.
Thank you all so much. The next order of business is the disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there anybody who would like to disclose a conflict of interest with any of the votes they'll take tonight? Seeing as none, we'll move on. Approval of the consent agenda, could I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda? Any discussion? Could I get a roll call, Patty?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Unfinished business, order 208-2020.
Second.
Could I get a roll call, please?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed. Order 208, an order providing for acceptance of City Street Lafayette Street.
Move to adjutant.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on, ordinance 209-2020.
An ordinance providing for amendment to zoning.
Move to adjutant.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Next is resolution 212-2020.
A resolution providing for appropriation of FEMA reimbursement.
Move to adjutant.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this to the 11:04 meeting. We're waiting for the exact amount that we're being reimbursed before we turn around and allocate it.
Second.
Any commentary on that? We're good? All right, I'll take a roll call.
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to new business, ordinance 221-2020.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I apologize. I have two things, 211 and 210, for these approval forfeitures. I wear those, because...
Those were in the consent agenda.
Okay, perfect, thank you, never mind.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that was a good idea, wasn't it?
Just making sure we didn't miss them.
No, thank you. An ordinance providing for amendments to marijuana ordinance.
Move to adjutant.
Second.
Any discussion? I see Mike with his hand up first.
No, go ahead. All right, thank you. Patty and I and Sarah worked over the last week with Jennifer Bergeron, who had had questions at the prior meeting about the ordinance. I think the changes that we've made that are in front of you, which you see in yellow on the copy, are acceptable to her and to Bill Lee. We get down to making changes right even today. So, I think we feel good that we've covered some of the areas that, you know, still had kind of a question mark. There is one additional item I'd like to suggest you consider to also change in the ordinance. And it's a little bit unusual, but we have a lot on the airport road that was just offered for sale, or someone made an offer on it, and the airport industrial zone doesn't allow for, and the operation that is proposed for that lot is a marijuana grow operation. And so, there are two routes that the city could take. One is to refer to the planning board, have the planning board review it regarding a zone change. But, the easiest thing, and the thing that I would recommend to you tonight, is that in the marijuana ordinance, if you look on page... Bottom of page three, top of page four, the marijuana ordinance looks like this, you should all have a copy of it. And that is to add the airport industrial zone as a permitted zone for marijuana. It's an industrial zone, just like the general industrial zone. The only difference between airport industrial and general industrial is the airport industrial zone was allowed, was created to allow smaller lot sizes, shorter or less setback requirements. And so, what I'm going to do is just pass around a map of that airport property, so you have an idea where it is. Actually, the map is incorrect, so you'll see on the map a lot eight, we've lined through it. It's not lot eight, it's lot seven, that's in question. And... The offer for lot seven is the full amount that we had listed with the broker. And so, someone was prepared to purchase a lot that exactly what we have it listed for. And by adding that zone change to the ordinance tonight, it'll allow us to go through with the sale. I just want to point out, while you're looking at the map, lot 50 was sold last, was sold in June 2019. We sold lot eight two weeks ago, or the city agreed to accept that price, it's going to come back before you. Lot seven is the one in question, and we're also in discussions with the sale of lot six. So, it's been tremendous since the June 2019 to today, the interest in those lots. We sold two. If you go ahead and change the ordinance tonight, that'll be three. And I think there's a good chance we'll have sold a fourth lot, which is lot six. We're in negotiations with that. So, whole lot of interest in that section of the city. Can I answer questions?
No, I think that's reasonable. I'm willing to make that amendment to add airport industrial to that.
Second.
Thank you. Counsel Thomas?
My only question is, it looks like at the very beginning of the ordinance, it says something about the holder of a license in any of the following zones, and it lists all the zones where it's allowed.
Which page or which section, Eric?
Page two, it's the first paragraph on page two.
Well, this is stores, is this, are we only permitting store, medical marijuana store? We're putting store, okay, so yeah, you have stores, so yeah, we would need to put it there too. Or we have to be put into that.
So, we would probably have to...
You're right, thank you.
Add airport industrial to those two paragraphs as well.
To those two paragraphs, correct.
If I may, Mike?
Yep.
We may want to, if you're amendable to the change to add airport industrial, we could bring the whole ordinance and pop it into the various sections, because it looks like it's going to be more than one area in that section, and then we could come back next, at the next meeting. This is only the first reading.
It's only the first reading.
And that way, we can have it all amended, and then we can make sure that we do it correctly without doing it and then having to redo it again at the next meeting. Is that reasonable, or?
That's reasonable.
Sure. As long as we know that the council is approving of going this direction, then we'll come back at your next meeting. Need to come back anyway, requires to vote.
So, then we would just withdraw the amendment and offer one amendment at the next meeting?
Correct.
Is that your suggestion?
Amendment withdrawn. Yep, the amendment is to add airport industrial in those two paragraphs on page two. Because those changes are already shown on the bottom of page three and top of page four.
I'll move to table this until the next city council meeting?
No, we don't want to table this.
No, we're going to vote, we're going to vote on it. And then they're going to bring the summary of changes at the next meeting to offer as an amendment.
All right, got it.
All right, so, right now, we need a vote on the amendment?
The, he withdrew the amendment.
Prove the ordinance as amended, well, as amended on page two. In that, see addition.
So, that, which is as it is now?
Correct.
So, we just need a vote on the item? Okay. Can I get a roll call, please?
Claude, Claude has a question.
Oh, Claude?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm kind of lost here. We've got three different proposals that I saw on the agenda. We get here, and we've got another shifting around. You know, the... Last year, the state promulgated regulations regarding the sale of adult use marijuana. The city appointed a committee to develop rules for the city pursuant to the state's regulations. The result of that committee's work was the city's marijuana ordinance, which council adopted. Those rules are just beginning to take effect, and yet we keep coming back with this little change and that little change. It seems to me that we ought to just let the city's regulations operate, and then see what we need to make in terms of adjustments. If they need a zoning change out at the airport, fine, we can do a zoning change. But, I'm just getting a little bit tired of us always talking about marijuana regulations when the city is faced with so many other really important issues.
Maybe you should bring some of those issues up. But this is what's in front of us.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying, Claude, but we, I mean, you know, when we put this together, you know, and as we start, you know, talking about this in current time, you know, and things, that there are changes that need to be made, and, you know, we're trying to protect, you know, certain folks and not make it harsh for folks as they go and apply for these licenses, and, you know, really just, you know, we want to make it more friendly for everyone. So, you know, as we execute this and we see it in real life, and we're like, ah, maybe this isn't the right thing, then this is the opportunity to kind of tweak it, and, you know, it's kind of a working document, and I'm okay with the changes that we're making, because, you know, I think it makes the amendment or the ordinance, you know, that much better. So, that's kind of why we do this.
Counsel, oh, excuse me, Counsel Frankie, was your concern about spot zoning?
Oh, that's a concern, spot zoning is a concern that I have in general with the way this council operates and the way things are presented to us by the city manager, yes, that is a concern. But my main concern is that we're basically telling the committee that developed the city ordinance, marijuana ordinance, that they did an incomplete job, and I think they actually did a very complete job. So, I don't want to disrespect the committee that worked so hard on the marijuana ordinance.
What's being proposed actually prevents spot zoning. Because I'm, and I'm sorry you don't have a copy of the map, but all of the lots that are shown on this map are in one zone. And by making this change to the marijuana ordinance, they all stay in the same zone. The other alternative would be to spot zone lot seven, or put a different zone for lot seven than everything else around it. And that's why I think making the change to the marijuana ordinance is the best way to go, because it doesn't create that one spot zone.
And certainly, Mr. Roy, had that been on the agenda as an item for study and discussion instead of being dropped on us out of the blue sky, that would have been, I would be perfectly happy with that. But, I am objecting to dropping things out of the blue on us.
Right, duly noted. Counsel Mayhew?
Yeah, I just want to mention that I'm a member of the marijuana committee, along with Jennifer Bergeron, who was the chair of that committee. And I looked at this document, and she's had consultation with me, and I see nothing wrong with these changes. Again, this document is an evolving document. This is not something, from a municipal standpoint, something that we are not going to go in and tweak it once in a while as society changes and as culture changes. You know, there's, things are brought to our attention, you know, we make changes to ordinances all the time. Not just the marijuana ordinance, which is presented to us tonight, but I can, as a counselor of almost six years, we have looked at various ordinances over the course of my tenure on the council. I see absolutely nothing wrong with this evolving document, because that's exactly what every ordinance is. Is, it needs a daily routine looked at, looking at, and this is just one of those things. Now, the excerpt of what the city manager wants with airport industrial is really a minor adjustment. When you look at it from a general industrial point of view, it's a matter of setbacks. I don't feel like that is a major consequence that we can, as a council, as a collective body, make a decision on something as that in regards to the airport area, which we want to develop, and we want to have business, you know, coming in and contributing to the overall tax revenue of the city. So, I think this speaks for what it is, and I fully support it.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, we'll take a roll call now, please. Patty?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel Olivera?
Yes.
Counsel Mayhew?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
No.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is five in favor and one opposed.
The next is order 222, 2020.
An order providing for approval of lease for the Alphonde Youth and Community Center.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Foss?
This is just a continuation of what we had talked about last one, last council meeting. Again, we're setting that pace for the campaign to start. I think it's going to be a great addition to the city with everything else that we're, we're doing, and hopefully reviving some of that winter business in Waterville. So, I'm all in favor.
Counselor, on the screen there, Claude, sorry. That's what happens when you're not here, you know? Sorry about that, Claude.
The guy who can't remember his name. The, the question I have is, I don't, said there was an attached lease, but I don't see any lease. My question is, how can I vote on a lease that I haven't seen what the lease is?
I'm sorry. Well, it does take, as an order, it does take two votes. I'll make sure that you and Counsel Olivera get a copy of the lease. We just finished it this afternoon with our attorney, Bill Lee, and the attorney for Alphonde Youth Center reviewing it. I noticed in the copy that I passed out to the other counselors, there are a couple of things that did not finally get changed on those copies. So in fact, we will have to make some changes when you get it back on October 20th, and I'll make sure you see it long before then.
Does the lease include a business plan and a provisions for how the, how the rink is going to be operated, and how much access the, there's going to be for members of the community?
Yes. Whether there's a business plan and whether there'll be a plan to use in the end?
There is definitely a business plan that's been developed by the Alphonde Youth Center and Central Maine Hockey, working together in concert, because I know that the Alphonde Youth Center organization doesn't want to make a commitment in this regard unless they know that the facility can and certainly become self-sustaining. So that's been looked at very, very closely, expenses, revenues. We know very closely what expenses are for a rink this size. That's, that information is very well-known. The question will be just how much time, how many hours of ice time, or how many hours of off-season use we can sell. But they've looked at that closely.
Mike, if I may, what we did with the, the ball field over on Matthews Ave is, in addition to the lease, we had a memorandum of understanding that addressed maintenance, utilities, who pays for what, who does what, very explicit. So I think I'm looking forward to that agreement, and then the city would, would be much more comfortable when we sign the memorandum with the Alphonde Youth Center.
Counselor Mayhew?
And Matt, I remember that as well, with working with you and Ken Walsh in my ward on Purnell Wrigley Field. And again, I think this is, for Counsel Flavia, I think this is a great opportunity for your ward. And I think it's, I think it's, this is an asset that's going to become one of those assets in the inner city of Waterville that is, is just absolute, absolutely extraordinary, because we have a complete array of different assets that are happening off North Street in Waterville, from, from the playground, the park, the soccer field, you know, the tennis courts, which I have been discussed with Counsel Flavia about eventually having those addressed along with the rooftops of the picnic tables at the North Street. I've had some consultation with Matt on this, and this whole evolving project with the Waterville Pool and the Alphonde Youth Center. And now we're talking about an extraordinary building that will allow Waterville youth hockey and other extraordinary events that can happen here in a public setting for the city of Waterville. It's a win-win situation. So I definitely, even though we don't have the details of the lease agreement, I'm sure, Mike, you'll have those emailed or directly in contact with us so that we can then make a proper second vote-
Yep.
-on that, so we can look at the lease. But whatever the lease is, you know, it's really second nature to what the investment and what the local economy is going to reap from this, from this establishment. I mean, that's the most important part, is that our youth are going to have a place to go, the local economy is going to boom, and again, the city of Waterville is in a win-win situation with this. So this is a no-brainer, folks. You know, it has my support.
Okay. And one more time, Counselor Frankie?
Just one last question. What is the cost to the city going to be? Are we going to get stuck like we usually do, filling in the gaps when projects don't meet the expectations?
There, there will not be any cost to the city. All utilities and all of that will be paid for by the Alphonde Youth Center and Central Maine Hockey. We're not expected to do any maintenance or any other work. The property is currently in city ownership, so it's not as if we're taking a tax, paying property out of circulation either. So we don't have any financial exposure at all, really. I suspect that when we plow the, the pool parking area in the winter, as we usually do, we might just plow the area that's near the rink, but that's not, that's not anything that we've even agreed to. It may be something we do as a matter of being there in, around the pool area, but other than that, I don't know of any other obligations.
Nick? And just for the record, Mike, we have a longstanding relationship with this organization and other facilities that have operated similarly, where we have leases, and never has the city been obligated financially to sustain those facilities, correct?
That's right. Matt mentioned Purnell Field on Matthews Ave, and that's, yep, same kind of thing.
Okay, we ready for a vote? Roll call, please.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Next is order 223, 2020.
An order providing for acceptance of grant funds from the Maine Outdoor Heritage Fund.
Move to adopt.
And discussion?
Well, Matt, you, you, want to speak about this? This is pretty cool.
That's very cool. I'm very proud of the work that the Friends of Quarry Road has done again on raising money for Quarry Road Recreation Area. This, this grant is going to help us leverage another grant, an RTP grant with the state that, that we just submitted that will be awarded in the spring, sometime in March, that we feel very good about, that's larger than this. So, again, we should all be very proud, just improving the trails, building more trails, redoing our signage, taking better care of the road, improving the boat landing. I'd like to report at the end of the year on how much they have raised. It's upwards of, it's over $200,000 just this year in fundraising for Quarry Road. So, just getting, I won't say bigger, but it's getting better, you know, and we're really, we've got a plan to maintain it. Of course, the COVID thing stinks, but it is an outdoor sport, you know, the Nordic skiing side, so we, we expect to be busy this year and be in the black again for the third year in a row. So, it should be in good shape.
Praying for a good snow season.
Oh, absolutely.
Thanks, Matt.
You're welcome.
Were you ready for a roll call? I think so. Thank you.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Next up is resolution 224, 2020.
Approval of agreement for emergency medical services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
And discussion?
If I could begin by explaining, this is another one of those late afternoon agreements that we worked on today, and so I'm going to pass out a copy to you. We wanted to make sure in the resolution where it says, before anyone signs it on behalf of the city, that Bill Lee takes a final review. But Bill has done that. We'll have him do it one more time. We worked with Tim Beals, the executive director at Delta, and his attorney also. So I think we've got all the changes done, and thank you, Sarah. She'll pass that copy out. It's been many months in the making, and I know that Chief Essler and Tim are ready to answer any questions you have. I'm sorry, you're just getting it now. And I guess for Counsel Frankie and Olivera, I'm sorry I didn't forward this to you. Should have thought that you'd be tuning in via online. So, I'll make sure you get a copy.
I mean, I guess Chief, they, they have this, they have the old copy, correct, Mike? In the packet? They have the old version?
Yes.
So I guess in lieu of that, having just had this myself, can we just high-level any of the changes that were made that, or is it, there were quite a few that-
Yeah, the changes that were made to this document in between what you were presented with in the agenda packet versus today are primarily clerical-
Yeah.
-organizational and have no real significance on the document itself or the intent of the agreement.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited for one to have this, to be able to finally, you know, say yes to this and get it rolling and all the work that, you know, that we did, and to see this unification come together, I think is, you know, phenomenal. So I'm looking forward to, you know, starting to see the reports as, as it is happening, you know, and as we move forward.
Yeah, this has been a long time in the making, and I'd really like to thank him for his work that he's done in preparing the foundation of this agreement. Of course, the city manager spent a lot of time on this over the last couple of weeks. Yes, we did work on it today, but we've been working on this for quite some time. And of course, our staff, both at the fire department and, and Delta, that are ultimately going to make this very successful. We've done our job in putting the agreement together, and now it's going to be up to our personnel to really change the way EMS looks and, for the better, of course. So I do appreciate everybody's time in this, and we think that this is a document that represents a fair deal between Delta ambulance and the city. And, you know, the, the term is relatively short, and this gives us the opportunity to go back to the table and, and have a discussion if we don't like anything. So I'm, I'm very confident in this document, and I wouldn't sit here and tell you that if I wasn't. Okay. Chief Essler, could you point out the change that we added late this afternoon under section eight, which is the top of page five? Section eight is amendments to the agreement? So this afternoon, we crafted some language. It is understood by the parties that this agreement is a work in progress and may from time to time require amendments based on actual performance and unforeseen circumstances, or the need to clarify or enhance the delivery of EMS services. And what that clause is trying to represent is, we can't predict, you know, a COVID 2021. We can't predict anything that's, you know, unforeseen. And of course, as we, as we presented the phases in particular, phase one and phase two, we need to make sure that the performance of phase one is what we've projected in order to move to phase two. And I think Counsel Foss, that was one of your concerns that you brought up at the meeting. We have every intention on coming back here and reporting on our progress and make, letting the council make the decision on whether we move forward or not.
Okay.
Does that summarize, Mike? Yes, right. And specifically in terms of, at one time, it was talked about phase one and phase two. Phase two would involve two ambulances. At the beginning, we're in phase one with one ambulance. So, we're not sure, and neither is Tim, about when phase two might start.
Right.
So that's why on the top of page two, I think you see the words, "Should both parties agree to proceed with enhanced services," what we're talking about now is more like phase two, that it would be on a date mutually agreed upon, because it's hard for us tonight to say, we think it's going to be July 1, 2021.
Right.
Delta doesn't know that. We don't know that. And so whenever that is ready, as Chief Essler said, we come back to you and talk about phase two, which involves a second ambulance, involves more personnel-
Yep.
-on your side.
Hiring more personnel.
And, and also, of course, involves stuff for Delta. But, so this is really to be looked at kind of as a phase one approach.
Let me get to Counsel Frankie, because it's easier for me to see you. Go ahead, Counselor.
Yes, I'm happy to see the change that you've put in, Chief Essler, in terms of being flexible about the, about the program. One of my concerns was the sort of nebulous lines of authority that are laid out. And as long as Delta and the fire department are willing to be flexible and work with each other on that, I, I think that's, looking at this as a work in progress is probably the best way to look at, best way to view things.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. One of the, one of the things that I'll definitely want to point out is, there are public-private partnerships throughout the state in EMS, but this is the first of its kind that involves a sophisticated response plan. So we are definitely willing to work together, and that's, that's been our intent this entire process.
Okay. Counselor Mayhew, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate my support. Sean, Tim Beals, Mike Roy, the committee, the thought committee, Mike Morris, and others that are involved, I believe Rick and Eric. You know, this is, emergency medical agreement is, like you said, Chief, is a, one of its kind of a public-private partnership. And like I said, Delta is an icon of this community, of this entire area outside this community. So I am very impressed to see this collaboration. Just like the city has been in collaboration with other entities, this, you know, EMS service, this is just a total enhancement of our services to our residents. And I, and I commend you highly, everybody that's involved with writing and stipulations and the open-endedness of a work in progress. It's just, it's just totally off the chart. So this is just, again, this is, this is, this is a great agreement that I just want to support.
All right. With that, it looks like we're ready for a roll call.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Next is resolution 225, 2020.
A resolution providing, providing for referral to the planning board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mike Roy?
Mike?
No.
Oh, that wasn't you raising your hand?
I was waving goodbye to Chief Essler.
Oh. I just saw this.
He did not want to bid on that item.
Oh, okay. Is, is this gentleman here to speak on behalf of this? Want to come right in?
It's here.
Rick Breton from LA Properties?
You can feel free to take that off to speak, sir.
Thank God.
Yeah.
Rick Breton from LA Properties. Randy Butler was supposed to be here, but he had a different agenda.
He's actually on, he's listening on the, yeah.
He is. All right. So I got, he gave me this packet. So I got, he gave me this packet of my expansion I'm proposing. Cassie's out of.
Sure, yeah.
Would you like me to do that for you? Or, thank you.
Thank you.
You want me to do it?
Do you have a copy? Because that way you can reference it when you're talking to us. That'd be great.
All right, so we're looking to do an expansion in between Village Green and Countryside Mobile Park. About 25 acres of land. And I ended up purchasing 435 West River Road to take 100 feet off that property line. So I would end up with like 172 feet on the entrance main road instead of 50.
Where is that, if I'm looking at the map?
Looking at the map, you see, see the Web Road comes down to West River Road?
Okay, yep, yep.
See where it comes right out there with the house, you can see the cutoff?
Okay, yep.
435?
Yep.
So I ended up buying the house socket. And it still gives me 216 feet for the house, which you only need less than that.
So this is, this area here, just this small little area here is where you're looking to?
You see the dotted lines?
Yep.
That's the area that I'm adding. I already own the rest of the land in behind.
Okay.
So we were originally talking about coming out and coming into Ryan Drive and through the, I just thought it would be too hectic for that many community members. So I just wanted to come straight out to the main road.
How many?
It was originally a 50-foot right away when I bought the property, which is all I would have needed.
Yeah.
But I just wanted more room, so that's why I ended up doing that.
How many more trailers would you add in there?
There's going to be 66 mobile homes and double wides.
66. Counselor?
How do it was, Breton?
Good, good.
The original design, like you had said, had it on to Ryan Drive. And then if I'm not mistaken, please correct me, you were going to take another access road into Corbett or Heather Drive.
We're coming into Victoria. If you look at the plan, he has an access road, that's the end of Victoria.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. What happened with the change?
Excuse me?
Why the change?
Well, I just figured people coming in out of, a lot of residents were complaining, I think, on the last meeting, with a lot of traffic coming in out of the park. So I figured it'd be straight access to the main road and not bothering the families that are already there.
Okay. Part 2, your future Road A, coming onto the Web Road.
Yep.
Where it says Map 17, Lot 7, the Beers.
Yep.
What's line of sight look like back there? I haven't, I've been to the property, but I can't remember the line of sight to that road. Is that all natural buffer back there?
Yep, all with buffers, with line buffers, yeah.
Okay. And that's going to be a right away through the field? Are you all in the field now?
I am in the field.
Okay.
We originally were talking about we was going to come through this other field for Zone RB. But I guess we're going to hold, that's just a future road for future development maybe. So we're going to hold off on that and come through. Water and Sewer is punched through there right there. So it's going to be a little bit more costly because of the distance. But I think looking at the impact for, you know, the residents that are there, it'll be less impact.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, so depending on how the vote goes, I assume this will go to the planning board and then we will see you again on the other side.
Okay.
Okay, Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you. Have a great, have a good night. Moving on, we have Resolution 226, 2020.
A resolution providing for referral to the planning board.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Do you want me to just include this in the ordinance?
Right. It seems like we should probably table this to the next meeting and wait and see what happens with the amendments to the marijuana ordinance, because it may be moved.
Someone here to speak though?
Postpone indefinitely?
Oh.
Well, I would, I would wait.
Are you here on your own? Oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear the earlier discussion?
Do you want to say anything?
You're good? All right.
I would just, I would, I would wait. I wouldn't postpone it indefinitely. Let's table it till the next meeting, see what happens with the other.
Make a contingency.
Change.
Yeah.
And then at the next meeting, we can table it indefinitely if we make the change in the other ordinance.
One way or another, we're trying to make sure, we're trying to make sure you get the crack out of here, so.
So I would motion that we table it till the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, do I need a roll call on that?
Yep. Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Resolution 227, 2020.
A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana registered caregiver license to caregiver number three.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Resolution 228, 2020.
A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana registered caregiver license to caregiver number four.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Resolution 229, 2020.
A resolution providing for renewal of a special amusement license to Cancun LLC, doing business as Cancun Mexican Restaurant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
One thing?
Yep.
Chief, everything's good down there?
Yes, I have no.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call?
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Resolution 230, 2020.
A resolution providing for approval of pole location permits.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Order 231, 2020.
An order providing for acceptance of a grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life for election-related expenses.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please. Oh, Counselor Frankie?
Just a quick comment. I was down at City Hall and voted today. Your best bet's to vote early.
No way, it's not as fun.
All set?
All set.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Resolution 232, 2020.
A resolution providing for approval of bid award grading and covering of the lagoons.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are we breaking ground this year? Are we breaking ground this year?
Yes.
Get it up.
All right. Counselor Thomas?
I guess my only question is, does this come, bid come in in line with what we expected for an expense? So will things be on track moving forward to, you know, the budget that we had discussed previously for this project?
Yes, it did. I was very pleased with the bid. There were several contractors that bid. The city engineer was again pleased with the bidder. I thought that they were a much better contractor. You're just excited about the completion of the range and the maintenance they have there, Council Mayor. Everyone supported this project and were kind. Excited about the completion of it so we can start using it. So again, thank you.
Great.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what the chief said.
You can watch it again on TV. Just kidding. You read about it.
So, sorry, Counselor. We received several bids and the city engineer has recommended that we take that low bid. And we thought that they would do a good job. And we're excited about completing the range. So hopefully, we can start that work fairly soon.
All right. I think now we're ready for a roll call.
Counselor Morris?
Yes.
Counselor Olivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Foss?
Yes.
Counselor Frankie?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
I miss the old meetings when we had all the all-stars in the audience, you know? Discussion item, concourse outdoor dining. Counselor Foss kicking it off.
So we've been in discussion with Lion's Den, the you-know-who's pub, Holy Cannoli, along with Daze Jeweler, and come up with a pencil plan of that area alone. One that would include some area for each entity. Put the Lion's Den out in the, out in the park as they are right now for the 21 season. I've been in contact with all of them. And so far, Jen has been able to secure her end that she had talked about last time, about transporting across the road with alcohol. Past that, I'm going to be bringing that to council. Got a couple of little fine points that we're going to square up. I see Mr. Jagair here. I'm sure he's going to talk to this. And I want to, I want to get, like I told Mr. Jagair back in the summer, anything we do down, down around Lion's Den and the pub would include closing down Silver Street Extension where Unicorn and Silver Street are with the same, same thing. We're also going to look at Jersey barrier, but not a Jersey barrier, something a little more pretty down there. Something a little more attractive. Instead of having big concrete, let's look at something different. But that's, that's what's coming. Just wanted to bring, get you guys warmed up to it so that you know what's, what's coming. Go from there.
Anybody on the council have anything they want to ask? Or we want to just let people come on in? We have, we have two folks right here. Come in as you shall and tell us what you have to say.
Hello, city councils. Thank you for a good summer. It's getting cold outside, though.
Yes, no doubt.
So I just want to read something. I'm going to try not to labor over it, but I'm here for two reasons. I'm here to advocate for parking, which I'll get into. And also to request to be granted early permission as Lion's Den is requesting for the closure of Silver Street Tavern next year. I guess certain things I won't go into because it was a reaction to the council notes last year. You know, I felt like, number one, I didn't know it was coming. And then I looked at the, at the thing and I was really embarrassed that I was being called out. My character is being called out. And anyway, bottom line is, I want to bury the hatchet with this group, okay? And I don't want there to be any more conflict. But on my own behalf and in my own, on my own defense, you know, I bought two buildings, one at foreclosure and one at auction at the height of the recession in 2010 and 2011. There were no takings for these properties. The first floors were closed. I'm talking about the Amiches Building and the Silver Street Building. The upper floors of the Silver Street Tavern Building were uninhabitable and condemned by the city. And I'm sure Mike remembers that. I grew up three blocks away from there. And my decision to invest in downtown Waterville were well before David Green and Kobe were throwing around a lot more money and buying up buildings kind of on the QT. But, you know, their investment has grown to be well in excess of $100 million, especially if you throw in the Art Center. Well, after Kobe started buying, well, everybody started buying and everybody wanted to buy, everybody wanted to be part of that downtown thriving injection of money, you know? Just want to call it the intention. I did this eight years, eight years before, maybe 10 years before. I had faith in Waterville. And I've never before had an adversarial relationship with any of my downtown partners. You know, I was the president of Waterville Main Street. You know, I was the president of the Rotary Club, twice volunteer officer, chief volunteer officer of the Boys and Girls Club. I started working on Main Street in the 7th grade at my dad's Jagair supermarket, you know, which is up where, well, across the street from Se La Ti. Okay, so. So anyway, here's the part where I just say, I want to drop the hatchet, okay? Because it's ridiculous. I've got, we've got great relationships with all the other restaurants. One of us runs out of one thing, we just walk up to the other restaurant, slide it around the back door. And I want that kind of relationship with the Lion's Den as well. And with parking, the parking committee proposed to the city council, they made a choice, and the city council adopted the parking plan. And I know that the money is not bonded for yet. And my concern, as I said before, is that I really, I want to make sure that we gain those spaces eventually when we do do that. So my big thing is the no permanent structures, okay, on that park. Because with the spaces that are going to be lost, with the hotel open, angled parking disappearing, and with the student housing that we've already lost parking, you know, we were able to gain 76 of these back. And 42 of the 76 come from Section D, which is the park area, you know? And the parking lot behind our buildings, now that they're building the Art Center and the old Waterville Hardware Building, that parking is going to disappear. And so now I have to find, you know, staff, customers. You know, we need parking spaces. So, and I don't know, I'm not going to fly my stuff. You know, I put over a million dollars, well over a million dollars in these properties. We won a historic award for our historic renovation of the Silver Street Tavern Building. It went from being condemned on the upper floors to being featured in Portland at the Portland Country Club, you know, for how great a job we did and how we adhere to historic standards. So at this point, I really don't care what you do with the park. You know, I'm okay with the Lion's Den being there. I think that there is an advantage to having a cluster. You know, we already had a cluster between the restaurants on Silver Street. And I think the Lion's Den added to that cluster. And so there's a lot of foot traffic between the places. So until that money is bonded for, they're a welcome neighbor as far as I'm concerned. So. And you've already mentioned, when one gets permission, I just don't want to sacrifice my permission for their permission. You know, because our customers loved what we had. And I want to give it to them again next year and they're expecting it. And that's really all I got. And I just want to thank you again, anyway. You made our season a success. Any questions?
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
Charlie, I just want to add on to your parking concern. Lion's Den is understanding that that structure that they have out there right now is temporary. There is coming a day that that will come down, depending on when we redo the parking. And like I told you, anything we do down in that section with Lion's Den and the pub had to include Silver Street being, being shut down for the same amount of time. What's good for one is good for the other in my mind. So that's, you know, that's the work we've been doing for the last week or so. work we've been doing for the last week or so, with all the, with all the shop owners down in that, down in that area.
Yep.
So, we got, you know, we're gonna come up with some, some good structure as far as barriers along Unicorn, Cancun.
And Silver Street.
Yep, kind of make that a little bit more, a little bit more pleasurable to look at, not just concrete. I don't know what that looks like yet, but make it a little more appealing.
It can be prettier than Jersey barriers.
Exactly, yep, yep.
You know, so, so they did get permission, Erica's gonna speak to that, they did get permission to walk across the street without.
According to Jen, according to Jen Bergeron, they did get permission.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much.
Awesome, thanks, Charlie. Hi.
Good evening. So, I don't even know where to start. I agree with Charlie, thank you for an amazing season, we couldn't have done it without you. I also agree, my intent when we opened the park was not to cause havoc, it was to survive. That was, that was the main goal, so that a business that Jennifer and I opened didn't close in less than a year. Going forward, we did get permission to be able to go across the street after talking with the other businesses on how it was gonna be blocked off, what they were gonna bring to the table. You think got a copy of the email?
I'm gonna talk with Jen, I don't, if I did, I don't remember, but that's okay.
Okay, she did forward it over to me, they finally had responded and said, basically, if that, if that's the plan going forward.
She attached them to an email to all of us this evening.
Okay. I thought that's what she said, I was trying to read it at the same time. So, I guess that's what we're, we're here for tonight, as far as going forward.
Yeah, this is just the update to, to bring everybody up to speed.
Yep, up to speed, on how we can all, and how we can all work together, how we can all make it work, we don't want to make it a huge cluster, but we all want to make it work, outside dining is, it's a huge thing, people love it, COVID or not, I think they'll still love it next year, they're expecting it, if we can work together as a team down there, I think we can make something good for Waterville.
And I think, you know, from, from where we were two weeks ago to where we are today is a large leap, it's not even a small, not even a small step, this is a large leap, and you know, that's, that's what I like seeing, everybody working together and coming up with a, with a game plan.
That's the way it should be.
You know, Jason, Jason Furchak from Cannoli's, he hadn't even thought about having his own outside space, and now he gets, he's got the opportunity to look at that.
Absolutely.
So, that's a win-win for everybody.
All right. Yeah, I think, COVID or not, Maine has a short, nice season, so people want to be outside, no doubt.
People want to sit outside, they love it.
No doubt.
If it works, if it works for all of us, I think it'll be great, and I think all of us getting together and working as a team will be great.
Well, thanks for sticking with it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Erica. Thanks. I think that's it, I don't see any questions. You know it.
Michael?
Mike?
Did the council want to set a specific date to return to this regarding any decisions to be made for next year?
I want to, I want to put it on the next, the next agenda, I don't want this dragging on.
October 20th, we'll have a discussion regarding the question about closing off the street, which is Merchant's Way, and also questions regarding closing Silver Street, which Mr. Jagair has brought up, so it, between now and then, I want to notify the building owners that this is gonna be discussed, so everyone has a chance to be here. Everyone's been notified?
Yep. Yep, let's not let this drag on.
All right. Counselor Flavia?
Yeah, I have a question, so is it gonna be blocked off at a specific time, or is it, is it okay?
Yeah. Jersey barriers don't get moved very easy.
We're looking at.
Like we did, so like, yeah, a couple of years ago, before, before we had them just walking across into the park for, at least for the you-know-who's, and for what was Holy Cannoli, now the, not Holy Cannoli, Italia, excuse me. That, that was, that area was Jersey barrier'd off all summer. Yep. Okay, great, so next meeting. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Counsel, we're at the counselor update section.
I have an update, more of just a, I guess a public service announcement, I guess. I'm involved with the Waterville Youth Football Program, and we are holding a spaghetti dinner, it is drive-through, so you're not gonna come inside, you just drive up, tell us what you'd like, and we'll bring it, we'll have runners, we'll run them right out to you, you can also preorder. This is gonna be on Saturday, October 17th, from 4:00 to 6:00 o'clock, and this is going to be at the Maine Children's Museum, formerly the First Congregational Church over on 7 Eustace Parkway, and we're gonna have spaghetti with some homemade sauce, some meatballs, some chicken parmesan, rolls, some carrots, cookies, you know, very nominal cost, it's $10 an adult, $7 a child, or a family of four is $30, so, you know, it's, it's a ground, this is really a grassroots organization right now, we've kind of like, we're working in partnership with the, the Alphon, and again, it's, it's, we're raising some money to do some good things, we're doing some updates to the scoreboard out there over at Reed Field, and we want to, you know, redo the snack shack, so, again, this is another step to help raise some money to put those things through, so again, October 17th, 4 to 6, drive-through spaghetti dinner to support Waterville Youth Football.
That's great, well, thanks for all you're doing, I will tell you, the Waterville Youth Football Program is thriving this year, on the first and second grade team, last year we had eight kids, I think we have over 20, we have 20 this year, so, a sport that's still going, and lots of kids having fun, so you guys are rocking it out, thanks.
Thanks for making me humble.
You're welcome, we'll see you on the 17th.
Counselor Frankie, did I see you with the, the note here?
No.
Anybody else, counselor update? You want to talk about trick or treating? Okay. All right, next up is community notes, community, community notes is time, or if something's not on the agenda, you want to talk about it, now would be the time, and we have some gentlemen here, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, councilors, Craig Bailey, I'm the commander of Waterville Post American Legion, and this is my adjutant, Ernie Parity, who's been a fixture in Waterville for American Legion, so our intent, and I know with the COVID and everything, our intent is, is to have the Veterans Day Parade on the 11th of November at 11:00, pending Mr. Mitchell's approval to leave out of the Elm and go down Main Street, and then take a left into Cassanway Square like we had the last two years, and then have a ceremony there, so, I know with COVID, everything happening, just wanted to come before the council and just, you know, as a community note, but also as a point of discussion, our members and who we're gonna invite, we're gonna ask them to wear masks as we march, I just can't control people that want to be out on the sidewalk, any different than they go in and out of restaurants, so, we're gonna put forward our permit through the Public Works, and hopefully we'll get a positive response back that we can hold it this year, I know there's other events that have changed their mind in not having something downtown, so we would like to, since we didn't have anything Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Nothing was really 4th of July, and we really want to do something for veterans, so.
Well, you know, I appreciate this more than you guys know, I thought it was really sad that we missed Memorial Day, and I think there would be nothing better and more uplifting than to have this happen on Veterans Day, and if anybody complains, we're just gonna call it a protest, all right?
Okay. Call it a veterans protest.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. No managers report?
No managers report.
It's like you've got short timer's disease.
Mayor, before you, before you adjourn, if I may?
Yes, you may.
I would just let everyone know that we're conducting in-person absentee voting at City Hall from 8:00 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, with the exception of Monday, the upcoming holiday. We will have extended hours till 7:00 PM at City Hall on October 14th, 21st, and 28th, so we encourage everyone to take advantage of that.
Thank you, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone.